I want to start by thanking everybody in Cornwall and area for staying home and following the rules. The streets feel very quiet, and I know that there are a lot of sacrifices being made. And those folks out there following all those rules, well, we thank you. We're grateful. And you're honoring the sacrifices that are being made. So I know it's been a tough go, and I want to thank everybody in Cornwall for being so good, so patient, so supportive, so connected with their neighbors and their friends and family. Merci. We will start with a moment of personal reflection. Thank you. I've asked councillor Ebert to help us while we're doing our meetings through Zoom. We're going to have councillor Ebert choose different versions of the National Anthem until we can go back to meeting in person and enjoying councillor Gardner's always lovely rendition of the National Anthem. So councillor Ebert. Thank you. We acknowledge that we are gathering on the traditional territory of the Mohawk people of Akustasne. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mayor Bernadette Klima.
Present.
Councillor Claude McIntosh.
Present.
Edick Bergeron.
Present.
Sid Gardner.
Here.
Dean Hollingsworth.
Present.
Present.
Councillor Caroline Ebert.
Present.
Maudie Stupel.
Present.
Glenn Grant.
Present.
Councillor Todd Bennett.
Present.
Justin Towndale.
Present.
Andy Lane McDonald.
Present.
All present, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Any additions, deletions, or amendments? Councillor Towndale.
Thank you, Madam American. I'd like to pull consent item three. Move to communications, please.
Any other additions, deletions, or amendments? Madam Clerk?
No, Madam Mayor.
So I'll need a motion to adopt the agenda. Councillor Gardner and councillor Stupel, any discussion? All in favor? Carried. Any disclosures of interest? Seeing none, lead a motion to go into committee of the whole. Councillor Towndale and councillor Grant, all in favor? Carried, thank you. Adoption of the following minutes, the meeting of January 11, 2021. Moved by councillor McDonald and seconded by councillor Gardner. Any discussion? Councillor Hollingsworth, was that? No? Okay. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Carried. Madam Clerk.
We have no presentations nor delegations this evening, so we will move to consent items. The first two are proclamations. The first one is requesting that council proclaim the month of February 2021 as Le Mois de l'Histoire des Noires, Black History Month, in the city of Cornwall. The second is requesting that council proclaim the month of January 2021 as mentoring month in the city of Cornwall. And number four, RFP 20 P10, Design and Construction of Administration Services for the Municipal Works and Infrastructure Administration and Garage Multi-Use Buildings. Recommended that this RFP be awarded to J.L. Richards and Associates from Ottawa at the total bid price of $1,595,076.36.
Moved by councillor Grant and councillor Towndale. Any discussion? I just want to say that for Black History Month next month, I want to thank Le Réseau d'Immigration Cracofun for moving that motion forward. And I look forward to hearing from, I've already started hearing from, the African-Canadian Caribbean Association for Eastern Ontario, and I know that they're planning activities as well. So please stay tuned. Please use your social media channels and whatever you can to stay connected and celebrate virtually as well. All in favor? Carried. Thank you.
Resolution. Budget presentations. Whereas during budget proceedings, department heads provide a presentational capital projects. And whereas the city of Cornwall approved an operating budget every year for administration to follow. Now therefore be it resolved that department heads present the department's operating budget in detail to council during budget deliberations at the same time as their capital presentation. Now therefore be it further resolved that presentation should include a description or reason for any line items or staffing that have changed from year to year, as well as an overview of the department's past year and coming year in terms of operational issues and goals.
Moved by? Madam Clerk?
Oh, that was moved by councillor Eric Bergeron. And Dean Hollingsworth.
Councillor Hollingsworth. Madam Clerk, can you remind us about how it works for notices of motion in terms of making any amendments or changes, please?
So the notice of motion was read at the last meeting for, to give proper notice. This evening it is a resolution, and it is looking for a vote in favor or not. Unless an amendment is very minor in nature, not changing the intent of the motion, then amendments are not in order. So if a different decision than this one proposed, we'd have to go through a notice of motion again and resolution.
Okay. Thank you. So the mover was councillor Bergeron, seconded by councillor Hollingsworth. I'm going to start a speakers list, and I'll start with councillor Bergeron.
I'd like to be last, if I may.
Oh, that's fine. So then I'll start a speakers list. Councillor Hollingsworth, did you want to start?
Actually, Your Worship, I'd like to speak second last then, if I may.
Councillor Grant, start with you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I read this with interest, and I was thinking, we receive quarterly reports throughout the year, and that is the time to question what is taking place the year, and to question exactly why we need to have this. That's bad enough that we have to do things on Zoom, which really prolongs the budget presentations. But we can ask these questions as we go along through the year. The budget presentations are lengthy enough, and I don't think we need this clarification, because we get that throughout the year when we have quarterly information sessions from the treasurer. So, or Chief Financial Officer, I should say. So I would be supporting this, because I like going in, if I read the budget properly and take my time, I can ask questions. I don't need a full explanation on it, because we get this throughout the year anyway. So I won't be supporting this motion.
Councillor Towndale, and then councillor Ebert.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I will be supporting this motion. I think it's a good idea. We've done it in the past. Generally, we do this anyway. This isn't, to me, any different than what we've done. But if it takes a motion to make it more in depth, I'm all for it. You know, I'm on my second read-through of the budget. I've started adding my notes in, and I have a lot of questions, a lot. You know, I do my homework. I read the agendas before meetings. I read the budget. But it doesn't mean that there's not going to be questions or more in-depth discussion or explanation required. We do get our quarterly financial reports, but they don't always contain the information that's in the budget. Some of these projects and initiatives are new. Some were our carryovers from previous years. But I think, you know, this is the kind of thing that's responsible in terms of governing a city, that we ask questions. We have the opportunity to do it, and we have in-depth discussion on it. In addition, it's not just for our benefit, it's for the benefit of the public at large. You know, we, maybe we do understand it a little better, because we sit around this table and we get the reports quarterly, or more frequently, or whatever that might look like. And we get the budget book and we read it. But the general public doesn't. The residents of the city do not. And, you know, those who are interested deserve the opportunity to get in-depth explanations of the budget process as well. So I think this is a win-win. It's going to be long, sure. It's going to be maybe tedious. Historically, our budget proceedings have been, with maybe the exception of one year where it was rather quick. But that's part of the job. So be it. You know, I'll get a, make sure I have my most comfortable chair, and I'll make sure everything's good to go. And I'll make sure my tablet's plugged in, and I'll spend all day on Zoom if I have to do it, or all week, or whatever that looks like. But I think it's a good idea. Thank you.
Councillor Ebert.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not going to support the motion. We've received our budget book. It's been a couple of weeks now. I think we'll have had it for at least three weeks come our budget meetings. It is our responsibility to go through those and then bring those questions forward. Being that we are not, if this doesn't pass and we don't go through operational budgets, doesn't mean we can't ask questions about the operational budget. That is our responsibility. We are going to make those notes. We can even consult with the public. The budget book is public, so folks can take a look at it. We can take their questions to the budget meeting. But I think going through line by line is going, I don't want to, I don't want to say a waste of time, because our time is clearly valued, and so is administration's time. Administration has been working on this budget for months, six months, eight months. And then they create this amazing book, which brings everything together for all of us. And then we're going to have to ask them to re-explain themselves, basically sing for their supper at a budget meeting, when we really should just be doing our own homework and bringing it to the table. Budget will be long regardless of this. We go through capital presentations. We have plenty of questions to ask. A lot of the projects that have been referred to, that they want to hear about, those are usually capital projects. If there are any major changes to any operational budget, we've either heard them when they took place, or we will hear from them. But to go through operational budgets, line by line, I think it just, it's almost a slap in the face to administration, who's put so much work into this already, who relies on us to be doing our homework right now, and bringing those questions forward, rather than going through each of those items. So I'm not going to support it. I hope the rest of council sees these points as valid. And, you know, we're still going to have a three-day budget deliberation regardless of this, and looking forward to it. And will certainly come with my homework.
Councillor McDonald.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am not going to support this motion, and I have to say, I regret the fact that people who have spoken in favor of it are framing it as the opportunity to ask questions. I have been through countless budget discussions, and I have never, ever heard administration, any member of administration, say, "I'm not telling you," or "I won't answer that." In fact, administration has bent over backwards, coming back at successive meetings, even giving us printouts of information, even the most trivial information that people have asked for. Nobody has ever been denied information around this table. So I lament the fact that this is framed as an opportunity to ask questions. That opportunity is always there. But I'm speaking against it, because this is very late in the day, as councillor Ebert said. Administration has been working on this budget since, I'll say October, but probably previous to that. And I think that if you have an administrative team who've been preparing a package, obviously the process that they're using to deliver the information, that they are absolutely forthright about disclosing to us, if you try to interfere with the process at the last minute, you can't help but throw them off their game. I don't think that's fair. I think this is an attempt at micromanaging, to the extent of which I have never seen before around the council table. Now, people who obviously are in favor of this might not think that. But it's unfair in terms of debate for the presenters of a motion not to present their ideas and their rationale before we who resist it respond. Because then a debate, you obviously, you make the proposition, and then people can respond to it. But here, we haven't had the proposition explained to us. So I think it puts us all at a disadvantage. And this is one time, Madam Mayor, when I hope that you won't cut off the speakers list when people have spoken once, because the system is...
I never did that, councillor McDonald.
No, I know. And I hope this won't be the first time.
Thank you.
I think that this is unfair to administration to ask them a week before budget presentations are to begin, to change everything up. And by everything up, I mean, they have a staff complement that they have here. Some are instrumental in delivering the capital budget points. Others are very instrumental in explaining the operating budget. So what do we do? Have all our staffs here for all the presentations? Like, this is asking people to invent a new system on the fly. So I think that if councillors want to have this sort of detail, and, you know, we used to get this kind of detail, and it was tedious, because we can always get whatever information we need. I think that it's a disadvantage, a great disadvantage to our administration. But if somebody wants to make that change, well, I suppose maybe they should get hired by that department, the finance department, and make the change as a member of that team. Or make the motion now, a year ahead of time. Make this motion for the budget of 2022, so that administration, right from the get-go, will start the process in the way council decides. If council will ever stoop to micromanaging to that extent, which I hope will never happen. That's all for now, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Any other speakers on this motion? Councillor Gardner, and then councillor Mac. Councillor Gardner.
I'm not going to... Okay, I'm not going to repeat what councillor Ebert, councillor McDonald have said. But going through this, this budget presentation resolution, questions have been asked every year in 15 years that I've been on council, at the budget deliberations. I think micromanaging is the word that I thought about when I was reading this, so I will not support this resolution. Thank you.
Councillor Mac, and then councillor Hollingsworth.
I think our budget deliberations, at least the, what, seven years I've been around, or six years, very transparent, opportunity to ask questions. You know, Ronald Reagan once said, "You hire good people, and you let them do their job. That's how you get things done." I think we got a standing team. They give us all the tons of information. We can ask information. I recall the last budget session, councillor Bergeron asked a series of very good questions, made motions, whatnot. That's what is transparent you get. Anyway, I'll do my John McCain with this one.
Councillor Hollingsworth.
Thank you, Your Worship. A couple of points of clarification before I express my opinion. First of all, when I was a councillor in 91 through to 2003, councils did line by line. So to suggest that it's never happened before, and this is an affront in the history of municipalities, that's not really true. The budget is arguably the single most important responsibility we have as councillors every year. If we did nothing else, and simply did the budget, budgeting is probably represents about 60% of our job, in the sense that policy comes from budget, and budget comes from policy, and the two have to kind of work lockstep together. So when a councillor or councillors suggests they would like to take longer to go through the budget process, I don't see that as the reason. Well, it's going to take too long. I don't understand the rationale for that. It's kind of our number one thing. As far as saying, well, you know, you should have your questions ready and prepared. Well, sometimes, at least for me, I don't really know what questions I have until discussions start taking place around the council table, and then somebody says, makes a comment or asks a question, and I kind of, in my mind, have a follow-up question. So the point to say, "Well, you should have your questions all ready and ask all your questions ahead of time," well, sometimes I don't really know what it is I don't know until the discussion starts taking place. And line by line, admittedly, will be meticulous, and I did 12 of them, so I'm certainly cognizant of that fact. But that's, that's part of the job. I don't understand this notion to say, "Well, you should just sort of sit there quietly and let them make a presentation and go on your way," or hopefully you'll have all the questions that you should know based on what you've read. Well, I can read, and I can ask questions, but things are bound to come up. And as far as, the other thing that's noteworthy, is that we get these detailed kind of reports from admin, and that's fine. We read them. And, you know, often they're in consent to booths, so we kind of just fly through them. But the public really, I think, only kind of gets in tune of how things cost, and how much it costs, and what we actually do, when the media is sitting there, and this is budget deliberations. And because budget deliberations kind of operate outside of the conventional council meeting, it kind of allows for a much open, much freer-flowing discussion, question-answer type period. And so while I admit that line by line may be a bit meticulous, I think the community tends to be more kind of zoned in during those deliberations. The other thing is that in terms of line by line, there are some line items that I quite frankly won't know what they mean, but I may not even know what it is I'm supposed to ask. It's like going to the doctor for a doctor's appointment. He tells you things, and you may not even know what it is he's telling you until somebody else brings it up. And so that's just the nature. I think, Your Worship, as much as it may take longer, certainly I don't want to be disrespectful to administration, but this is kind of our big number-one job. And I think by not doing line by line, and maybe we don't need to do line by line every year, but certainly I think at least one or two years during a four-year term, it's not unreasonable, which is why I'm going to support the motion. Thank you, Your Worship.
Anyone else before I go to councillor Bergeron, councillor Stupel, and then councillor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I read the resolution, and, you know, at first I was going to vote against the resolution. But as councillor Hollingsworth has said, a lot of what I was going to say, it's without being disrespectful to administration, I, you know, I can't really vote against trying for us to be more detailed. And yes, administrations always has the answers that we're looking for. But a lot of it does come out of, once you start discussing something, and people say, "Oh, I didn't see it that way," or "I didn't see it this way." So, you know, budgeting is one of our, the biggest tasks that we're assigned to as a councillor, along with representing the residents. So I'll support this motion. And I like councillor Hollingsworth suggesting of maybe one or two years out of a four-year term. So I think it just gives us another, gives us another way to look at the exercise of budgeting.
Councillor Bennett.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess I'm just looking for some clarification. In the second paragraph, it says that we're asking for departments to present a detailed operation budget. But in the third paragraph, it says that we should include descriptions of reasons for any line items, staffing changes that have changed from year to year. So is it, what is it? Do we want the full line by line, or do we want just explanations on what has changed from year to year? Because operations is operations. It doesn't really change much from year to year. But I would be interested in getting explanations on items that have changed from the year before. So is it a detailed one for line for line, or is it a description of the things that have changed?
So I have to go to the drafter of the motion. Councillor Bergeron?
Very specifically does not mention line by line, which I have no objection to it saying that. But it very specifically does not say that. I don't believe that a detailed presentation and what you're talking about, councillor Bennett, are opposite. I think they are the same. So the more detailed... So, uh, the more detail in that second paragraph is what I'm talking about.
Counselor Bennett, back to you.
That, that's fine. So, uh, so what I'm getting from this is that if if administration has a change in their operational budget from one year to the, from this year from last, then that's the explanations we're looking for? So if that's the case, then I would support this motion.
Anyone else before I go to Counselor Virgil? Counselor Virgil?
Thank you. I want to start first by saying, Madam Mayor, I in no way, shape, or form feel that you have in any way prevented me from asking questions during budget time. Um, that's been brought up a little bit. I, I was able to ask all the questions I had last year. Uh, I did vote against the budget last year because I felt the process wasn't, uh, the way that I would go through a budget. In terms of some of the items I've heard today, uh, let me just address them. Uh, the quarterly reports, I don't think, are the place to be questioning, uh, whether we will be funding for a year uh, moving forward. Budget time is when it happens. I I have taken some of the quarterly reports out of consent where they usually are, uh, to ask some questions. Uh, I've never asked a question and not received an answer from a department head. The reason this motion was made, uh, today or two weeks ago as a, as a notice of motion was exactly to give enough time for department heads to come to our council meeting. I think some of the objection last year when I made the motion on the second day, uh, a budget, I I I wanted to make it on the first day, but it was, I was told it wasn't necessary. When I made the motion on the second day, there was some resistance saying that, um, you know, there wasn't enough time for this to happen. And listen, um, I understand that some councillors don't want to micromanage. Uh, I fully believe looking at a budget the way I'm suggesting is is not micromanagement. In fact, it is our, our duty as councillors, but, uh, that's opinion, I suppose. At the end of the day, look, I, what I learned in the first two years of budget is that when capital presentations are happening, and they do happen, we go into very detail about capital projects. The line of questioning that comes from that conversation is, is fantastic. There's a lot of back and forth, there's a lot. I I made some notes last year, I had about 100 questions that came up from the conversations that were happening during capital presentations. What I have tried to word here is that we do the same thing with the operating budget. I'm trying to get department heads to say, hey, this is where there's a difference from last year, this is why, and this is the conversation we need to have about it. Uh, I I haven't even mentioned COVID or the fact that like this was a difficult year. I I I'm well aware of that. But I really would like to see us as a council, look at the operating budget the same way we do capital. Because to me, they are the same. So Counselor Hollingsworth touched on some of the, the reasoning, you know, behind this, this motion. I, I don't think it's a very controversial item to discuss. I think looking at the budget, looking at operating expenses is is our duty as councillors. I don't think it's about trusting administration or not. Uh, it is our job as councillors to represent the taxpayer at budget time. And so to me, that is, uh, it it's really just a conversation with department heads. I want them to present the subject matter of which they are experts. I don't envision this is going to be a lot of homework for them. In in fact, I, I think the opposite. I think our department heads can come into a meeting and answer these questions very well. I have no evidence to the contrary. But the budget process, it is, it is very confusing to me that we would look at capital in detail and not operating in detail. I just don't understand it. So this motion, I think, provides enough time. I think it, uh, I I, I think it is relatively clear. I think it is, uh, with the intent that this is to, uh, a conversation about our budget. And so I hope it passes, I really do.
I'm going to allow a second round, so if anyone wants to speak again, and also Grant would like to do so.
Uh, through you, Madam Mayor, I, uh, our procedural bylaw allows us to speak once, but, uh, I'm asking through you to our fellow councillors that allow me to, uh, speak a second time. I need the two-thirds majority for that to happen. So if there are no objections.
Madam Clerk?
Uh, it's a very interesting point. Um, I know that, Madam Mayor, you have allowed discussion through, uh, second rounds.
Yes.
Through your term. Um, technically, Counselor Grant is correct. Um, it does say that each councillor has one time to speak for three minutes. And anything, uh, out of procedure would require a motion, uh, with two thirds, two-thirds majority. It is your call, Madam Mayor.
So I'm presenting that motion, Madam Mayor, uh, to allow us a second round, uh, on this.
Okay, well, we're gonna have to discuss this, uh, further um, in terms of our procedural bylaw. But if Counselor Grant is making that motion and Counselor Virgil seconds, all in favor? Go ahead, Counselor Grant.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, you know, I'm a procedural guy, so it's, uh, and we got that clarified through the, uh, integrity commissioner when he was here. The, uh, the one thing I want to mention as well, and that's why it brought, because I thought of it afterwards, this is our third budget. Uh, I've got the night, 2019 budget book, the 2020 and the 2021. And fortunately, I, maybe most of us are there, but some people have to work. And I apologize, I'm not slamming you for the amount of time. But I, I take that budget book from 219, compare it to 220, then compare it to 221, and I draft questions accordingly. So, you know, when you go line by line for, we did this in in the years past, uh, and Counselor, uh, Hollingsworth is, uh, correct on this. I found it a very, very time-consuming, and I had a hard time, honestly, keeping attention, because we go through this throughout the year. The changes are very, very minute from one year to the, when I went through one budget book to the next. I'm thinking, our, our administration have a heck of a big job. We ask for numerous reports throughout the year. We get those reports, we digest them, we vote on them. Some of them I find that are, aren't necessary, we should do our own homework. But that's the process and I, I support that process. I don't support this motion, and that's for the reason I find it extremely, uh, time-consuming. And I do my homework before budgets, so now I have my questions, uh, prepared. Because we, we get these reports throughout the year. And and our quarterly report, there isn't much change. I don't know why we are asking this at all. It surprises me, but, uh, I'll go along with the majority. If that majority want to hear it, then I'll go along with it, but I don't think it's necessary. Thank you.
Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and, uh, I I agree with, uh, Counselor Grant. I don't think this is necessary. Uh, even to the fact of staffing changes, these are highlighted in the budget if we, and and throughout the year, every time we hire a new person or shave half of a percentage point off a job, these things come before council, so we're aware of them. And, um, uh, once again, this issue is being presented as access to information. We have the opportunity to ask for every bit of information one could possibly entertain about operating, just as we do about capital. So, uh, I rest, uh, on the point that I believe this is micromanaging, and I think it's grossly unfair to administration, which has prepared the budget presentation for 2021, to ask them now, a week before the presentations are to begin, to change the process. Um, I think it's, uh, it's unfair, and it's unnecessary, because we have all the access to every bit of information we could possibly want. Thank you.
Anybody else on second round? I will, uh, speak now and then I'll s- go to Counselor Virgil to wrap up. So I I agree with the comments made about budget process being pretty much the single most important thing that we do. And a city our size has significant challenges around that. Because we are a full-service city, but we're not a big city. We don't have, um, a lot of people to, um, pay for all of these, you know, excellent and crucial services that we need. So a lot of the focus has to be on growth, on attracting residents. And so that's difficult to do in, in this context, and it's gonna be even more challenging as we go forward um, with the impact of COVID on our, our budgets. I'm not concerned about long meetings. I never have been. In fact, this council, our last regular business meeting took five hours. We sat on Zoom screens from 7:00 to 11:00. Didn't take a break, that was a regular business. So concerns about long meetings, I don't think are really something that this, this council worries about. I think that we put in the time that is required, and we have the respectful conversations on any and all issues. Um, yes, Counselor Virgil, I appreciate your comment about, uh, questions and deliberations. I do, I have always erred on the side of allowing as much conversation as possible. That does lead to long meetings, but it does mean that once we make a decision, everybody has participated, everybody has deliberated. Helps the quality of the decision-making. And the issue about questions, so the issue I have with this motion is that I think all of this work is already being done. I think all of the opportunities are already present. I've looked at the budget book for this year. I took time to go through it. There is always the section on capital projects, and there's always the section on operations. It's there. So I guess what I'd prefer to see, rather than this type of motion, would be having people come to the table with not questions, ideas, projects. If you want cuts to the budget, you know what? This council is gonna listen, because that's what we always do, and we're gonna debate. If you have specific ideas where you think that we could trim, where you think that we could be more efficient in our budget, um, amounts, bring them forward. So it's not about questions, it's about reading through the budget, having ideas, and bringing those ideas to the table to see if there's any way that we can do budget in term, do better in terms of coming forward with the number. So I will not be supporting the motion, because I think the work is already being done. I think the opportunities are already there for all of the discussion to take place. And whether it takes one day, two day, three day, five days, I don't think this council cares about the time, because we have put in the time required on all items. So if there are ideas as to how to do better, let's bring them forward. Let's focus on ways to do better. Counselor Virgil?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I have to say, I have, um, you know, I did vote against the budget last year, but at, at no point did I feel like you were trying to.
Oh, no. While I was. And I, nobody's, I'm not taking it that way.
No, but I, I, I want to be clear that that isn't the intent of the motion.
Of course.
I, I do feel like I was able to ask any question that I did have. What I don't feel is that I, there are questions that I may not have known that I had. And this came out in, in capital a lot. Several times I noticed councillors asking questions that were not being asked until there was a conversation. And that's what I want to see from our operating budget. I'm not going to, uh, dive into the, the micromanagement versus not. I just think ultimately, you know, I worded this motion very specifically to not say line by line, because I'm aware that there are councillors who feel that is micromanagement. I don't. I feel that's our duty as councillors. But that's not in the motion. The motion says anything that's changed. The department heads come to us and say, here's what we're going through. Here's why there's some changes to our budget. Maybe things are the same, maybe they are. But it's not about whether I have questions. It's about a presentation aid to the public about what's happening in this budget. We do see an increase in this budget, so I think we have a duty to the taxpayer to go through this. Uh, I, I don't mind if this budget meeting takes five, six, seven, 10 days. I, I really don't, and and I've never felt that you do either, Madam Mayor. So I'm just gonna leave it at that. I'd like this to be a recorded vote. This, to me, is a very critical part of our job as councillors. In fact, I, I consider it to be our, our most important meetings, is what we do at budget. So I'd like this to be recorded. I hope it passes. I don't think this is outside of anything of the norm. Uh, I think typically a budget should be passed this way personally. But I, I ultimately, I think our department heads are prepared to present and answer these questions. You know, at any, at any council meeting, let alone a budget meeting. So I hope, I really hope this passes.
Madam Clerk?
I would call the, uh, go through each member to find out what the vote is, Madam Mayor. Councillors Claude McIntosh?
No.
Eric Bergeron?
In favor?
Sid Gardner?
No. No.
Councillors Dean Hollingsworth?
In favor.
Caroline Ebbay?
Opposed.
What is depend?
In favor.
Glenn Grant?
Opposed.
Justin Towne-Tell?
Yes.
Todd Bennett?
In favor.
Elaine McDonald?
Opposed.
And Madam Mayor?
Opposed.
Six against and five in favor.
I'd like Madam CIO to come on screen. Thank you, Ms. Adams. I just wanted to ask a question, um, in terms of having department managers able to discuss operational budgets in comparison with last year's budgets and highlight what has been changed. Will that be possible?
Uh, well, Madam Mayor, through the, um, like, within the budget book, uh, we've provided information under the operational tab. It goes by, uh, department by department. So those, uh, numbers are rounded up into the categories that council has been familiar with seeing with respect to revenues, um, purchase of goods, services and rent, um, financial and transfers, salaries and benefits. And staff have, in their commentary, have indicated what if there's, if there are changes that should be noted, staff have provided some commentary within that. Um, there also is a tab within the book that identifies, uh, staffing changes, uh, staffing personnel. But also, that information is also gonna be highlighted in the CFO's presentation. So when she goes through an operating presentation and her overall presentation, she speaks to the corporation overall, but she will be spending time going through what some of those larger variances are. And she will be, uh, she will be speaking to the changes in staffing complement within her presentation.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that, that city managers were going to be able to speak to those issues, um, not just in response to questions, but also just in terms of presentation, um, so that the public and council, uh, have access to that information and that we're doing our due diligence. Thank you. Madam Clerk? Next item?
Next item is the unfinished business listing and we're looking for a motion for council to receive that list.
Moved by Counselor Eber and Counselor Dupell. Any discussion? All in favor? Carrie?
Now we'll go back to our fourth quarter non-competitive procurement report with a recommendation that council received this fourth quarter non-competitive procurement report for the period ending December 31st, 2020.
Moved by Counselor Towndale and seconded by Counselor Grant. Counselor Towndale?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I pulled this from consent just to get a bit more clarity on it. I'm familiar with the policy on why we do non-competitive, non-competitive procurements from time to time. In this case, you know, it does reference the policy that says to ensure compatibility with existing goods or maintain specialized goods that must be maintained by the manufacturer of those goods or its representative. However, this is a development of a water servicing master plan. It, it's not a good in a sense. It's more so it is a master plan. So I was hoping for some more clarity on why this was single sourced.
Thank you. Madam CFO?
Through you, Madam Mayor. The reason for the single source to Watson and Associates is because Watson completed our water financial plan and the, the rate plan. So a lot of that information that they've collected builds to our water servicing master plan. So they already hold that information and understanding that are already sort of like two steps into developing that. And that is the reason it was sole sourced to them.
Counselor Towndale, follow up?
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. That's a great answer. That really explains it and that is a good reason. That's, thank you.
You're welcome. Any further discussion on this motion? All in favor? Carrie?
Let me start that over again. Bylaws 2021 009 to 11 inclusive listed on the agenda are being presented to council for adoption.
Moved by Counselor Eber, seconded by Counselor Gardner. Any discussion? All in favor? Carrie?
We are now at the reports from standing advisory, special and ahadot committees of council.
Any reports from standing committees? Any updates? Our standing committees all meeting virtually? Yes?
Yep.
Okay. No updates? All right. Madam Clerk?
And we are looking for the adoption of the confirming bylaw.
Moved by Counselor Grant, seconded by Counselor McDonald. Any further discussion? All in favor? Carrie? Motion to adjourn? Counselor McDonald and Counselor Eber. We will continue our in camera afterwards. So for the public, we're leaving your TV, but we're going to continue work in camera. And for the public, again, thank you for the work that you're doing during this time to keep everybody safe. We thank you for your patience. Counselor McDonald, did you want something to say? Yes? You're muted.
If you just clarify, may I ask the clerk through you, will we be getting a new invitation? Or do we click on the former invitation and?
Yes. My understanding is we click on the former, the invitation, the former invitation and we'll go back in camera.
Very good. Thank you very much. We're asking everyone to leave this meeting and to join the 5:30 in camera meeting again.